That was common.
That was part of it. I always felt that they said, you know. They didn't like the chairman. He really pushed it.
Right, right, right.
I just, you know, I don't know. I just tried to be. We got some people. Yeah. They didn't clean up my place. You know, I'm like, I always see that. I'm like, well, I decide. I'm a no but. I think they all have their own. They're all very round. They should have. They keep it on. It's still. It's like, dude, that's me.
But man, they can still come over. And I would say.
And then we'll be put down pebbles.
I'm gonna take. Yeah, we visit our community too. Do we hear?
Yeah, I. I'm grateful.
Yeah, you always want that.
Ooh. I had a good time. It's straight off.
That month. Yeah, I'm for it. I mean, it's. Young man. Should be all true. Yeah. How are you both? You have a healthy body. Oh, okay. That's a good truth.
Yes. All the home. Yeah, that. We're showing the best days. You get to get a lot of pushback today. The kids all want to go out and buy. I want to go to the bar. Right. And also, people grocery store. I'll be in. I mean, it's just. I wait to get the work. I just wanted to see what heroes and how good. And that is taking really only. I'm sorry. You have. We saw we had people go on the dirt road. Pretty good along the D.C. Yeah. Yeah.
Welcome to the New Kent County Planning Commission meeting, February 28th, 25. Home meeting to order. If you can please stand, the four members out. Please. Aye. Let the allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic, for which it stands, on a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Ryder, could you please call roll?
Ms. Townsend?
Here.
Ms. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Moyer?
Here.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Here.
Ms. Thomas?
Here.
Mr. LaRochelle?
Here.
Dr. Schmidt?
Here.
Ms. Rose?
Here.
Reverend Hathaway?
Here.
Mr. Bennett?
Here.
Mr. Davis?
Here.
All right, everyone's here, so we have a quorum. Next is approval of the minutes from January 21st. Anybody have any corrections?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to accept the minutes if no one has any corrections or changes they need to make.
I saw two corrections. I wasn't, it's not in the minutes, but it's in the formatting.
Okay, go ahead.
There's a typo in new business, paragraph 10, regarding. You see in the bold? New business. Did yours have that? Page 11 of 15 at the bottom, new business, regarding is misspelled. And then on the next page, regarding and roadway are misspelled in section B. Am I dreaming?
No, you're, yeah.
Do you see those corrections as well? Okay.
All right. Everyone's here, so we have a quorum. Next is approval of the minutes from January 21st. Anybody have any corrections?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to accept the minutes if no one has any corrections or changes they need to make.
I saw two corrections. I wasn't, it's not in the minutes, but it's in the formatting.
Okay, go ahead.
There's a typo in new business, paragraph 10, regarding. You see in the bold? New business. Did yours have that? Page 11 of 15 at the bottom, new business, regarding is misspelled. And then on the next page, regarding and roadway are misspelled in section B. Am I dreaming?
No, you're, yeah.
Do you see those corrections as well? Okay.
All right. Any other corrections regarding the minutes? Ms. Townsend, did you?
Just keep it going. Accept the minutes with the correction. Amendment with the, with the corrections act.
Thank you, Ms. Townsend. Thank you, Mr. LaRochelle. Mr. Ryder, please, poll commissioners.
Ms. Townsend?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Moyer?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Ms. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. LaRochelle?
abstain.
Dr. Schmidt?
Aye.
Ms. Rose?
Aye.
Reverend Hathaway?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
So the minutes are approved with the corrections. Next up is the citizen comment period. Comments are limited to those on planning-related issues that are not scheduled for a public hearing later on the agenda. Do we have anybody on the sign-up sheet? No one signed up, so we'll close the citizen comment period. Tonight, we have two presentations, one regarding proposed amendments to section 9810 of the county code regarding accessory buildings and uses, and then after that, we have a presentation regarding the county's housing advisory committee.
Good evening. Hope you all are doing well. In a moment, you'll hear from our zoning administrator, Angela Leflet, regarding some amendments to the accessory building ordinance that the county currently has. This stems from some situations that have arisen over the last few months, but really kind of stem back to longstanding interpretations of how our county code currently reads. The purpose of tonight's presentation is to get this in front of you guys and hopefully solicit some feedback on what we have drafted. Obviously, it's tough to make everybody happy, you know, across the board. We have a lot of residential use in agricultural areas. We also have true farms in agricultural areas. So our goal is to find a happy medium to address the accessory buildings that are currently allowed.
Good evening. My name is Angela Leflet. Thank you for having me here today. Tonight, I will be going over the, what the current ordinance has and then what the proposed changes are, as well as showing some examples of what these proposed changes would look like, and asking for feedback from not only the board, but our citizens to help draft an ordinance that works cohesively for New Kent County and our citizens here. So the current ordinance that is up on the screen now, chapter 98, article 1, section 9810, in this portion of the ordinance, not much is going to change in regards to the residentially zoned properties. So those are your R1, R2, RO zoned properties. The heavier change that you'll see later on is going to stem in the A1 agricultural districts. But currently, the way that the ordinance reads, as you can see, we've got accessory structures that are associated with residential living, provided that such structure, structure does not exceed 50% of the total floor area of the primary structure. And then in the agricultural A1 district, such structure may total 3,000 square feet. The situation that staff has noticed here, as you can see, it just says structure. It's not saying collective structures. There's been a long-term, longstanding interpretation that it is collectively. So all the accessory structures that are detached on the property, more specifically in the A1 district, all of those total structures can't exceed 3,000 square feet. So there is some confusion here with our citizens when they go for permits and they get denied for exceeding that total structure limit. The proposed changes are shown here in red. Staff would like to better define accessory buildings, so we're going to leave that to a definition update in our ordinance, so that way there's a little bit more idea of what this includes. It's not just limited to sheds. It's going to include your detached garages or workshops, a pool house, any detached accessory living. So all of those detached accessory buildings, we want to capture just in a definition rather than really cluttering up this portion of the section here. The, sorry, the way we're getting to here is the cumulative total of all detached accessory structures, and that we've got the S at the end for structures. This way, it's a lot clearer and cohesive in our ordinance and comes across better to our citizens when reviewing our ordinance. And then the bigger change here in the A1 district, such structures may total, so now we're going to take out that 3,000 square feet and add up to 5% of the lot area behind the front setback line, but may not exceed a cumulative total of 10,000 square feet, whichever is less. I've got a couple of slides later that's going to show what this is going to look like when it's applied. In any case, the total number of accessory buildings cannot exceed five on a single lot. So we drafted that in an effort to try and keep New Kent County in line with our current strategic plan and our current comp plan, as well as the future comp plan, to keep New Kent County as rural as possible without cluttering properties with a ton of tiny buildings. So if you've got somebody that can have that 10,000 square foot maximum, it keeps them from having numerous structures on a very small property. After talking to local residents, especially farm owners, five might be a little restrictive on our larger lots within A1, so we've been given ideas of maybe considering 20 acres or less, or 25 acres or less. So that's some feedback that we're looking for. What's a happy medium there to work with our farmers, but also to work with our single-family homeowner that they aren't farming on their property, but they would like to have some accessory structures beyond just a detached garage or a shed. And then we're also clarifying that the total square footage includes roof structures such as attached or detached gazebos, pergolas, porchers, and lean-tos on accessory buildings. That's not clear right now in our current ordinance, but it is a longstanding interpretation. So this kind of gets a little more of that gray area out and helps our homeowners know that when they are developing a plan to bring forward for permitting for a structure, they're including that square footage of a lean-to or a porch. So we did look at surrounding localities. There's kind of a mix going on. Out of the nine, four of them don't regulate a limitation on the size or amount of accessory structures on a property. Several of them do limit them, with the majority being between 30 to 50%. The one that staff like the most, King and Queen County, they do 30% of the lot area past the front yard setback line. So that's something that we would like to try and include into our ordinance here so that it's clear, it's consistent throughout the, the community, and it doesn't leave any gray area of trying to figure out where is that 30% coming from, or the 5% coming from. And then you've got to think about properties where the homes are set back further on the lot, to keep people from just not putting anything in the rear yard and then cluttering up the side and front yards. It's just a lot cleaner to do it from the front yard setback. So the next four slides are going to show you examples of what does this look like if it's passed and what that 5% looks like on properties. So this property here is a 15-acre lot. The property is outlined in yellow. The blue shaded area, that is your area highlighted for the square footage past the 75-foot front setback for the A1 zoning districts. As you can see here, that area highlighted is almost, you know, right at 600,000 square feet. 5% of that is 29,000 square feet and some change. So in this ordinance change, the maximum that they would be allowed is 10,000 square feet and five structures if we kept with the five structures under a 20-acre or 25-acre lot. So to give you an idea of what this looks like, on the left-hand side, they would be meeting the five structure limit, and the total of these structures here is 9,988 square feet. The side on the right is just four structures, but again, they would be almost maxed out at 9,988 square feet. If we're looking at a five-acre lot, again, 5% of a five-acre lot past the front setback line still exceeds that 10,000 square feet, so they would be limited to 10,000 square feet and no more than five structures. To give you an idea for this property here, the left-hand side, they have 9,832 square feet. The right-hand side has 9,932 square feet. And these are, some of these that I've got shown here have existing structures on the property already, and then I added two to give that visual of what this would look like. So the next example, this is more of an irregular-shaped lot, but it's a smaller property. It's 3.24 acres. Their 5% is 1,858.4 square feet. That would be the max that they would be allowed. They can't do the 10,000 square feet because the 5% is less than 10,000 square feet. So here, they could, if they wanted to, do five different structures. The example that I've shown here is an existing shed, adding a carport and two more buildings on the property to the left, which total 1,798 square feet. Or the property on the right, they could go with a little bit bigger structure and limit it to 1,787 square feet. And the last example that I have is a much smaller lot, zoned A1. It's less than half an acre. Their 5% would limit them to 416.5 square feet. They can do this in numerous configurations. If they wanted to do four 100-square-foot buildings, they would still be in compliance with the ordinance, or they could just do one large 416-square-foot building on their property. So just to recap, staff is looking to increase the allowed limit for accessory buildings for lots zoned in A1 from 3,000 square feet to 5% of the lot area past the front setback line, or 10,000 square feet, whichever is less. Staff is considering limiting the total number of detached accessory buildings on lots that are less than 25 acres to five total structures. But again, we're open to thoughts and ideas of if maybe 25 acres is too little and we need to go up a little higher, or it's too much and we need to go a little lower. So we're open to those thoughts and ideas. And this is in order, again, to keep in line with the comp plan, the future comp plan, a strategic plan, in order to keep New Kent County as rural in nature as possible. We'd also like to make sure that we are clarifying that the allowed square footage for detached accessory buildings is collective and not per building. This will be more consistent without having to reply, rely on an interpretation. And then any and all feedback is welcome from the community, from board members. You can email me here, as shown on the screen. My information is also show, shown on the county website. So I appreciate your time tonight and letting me get through this.
Thank you, Ms. Leflet. Anyone have questions, Ms. Leflet?
I, I got one.
Maybe some food for thought. Most people I would consider that are living in a smaller lot size, when they go to buy the many houses that are already made, they usually buy it because that's all the money they have at the time that they buy it. And then after they get that piece taken care of, then two years later, they buy another piece because they know they need more storage. So I don't, I don't know what the solution to the problem is, but I just want to make sure that everybody's aware is that the reason these little houses get put there is because they can't afford the cost right up front to do a big one. So that's, that's kind of my food for thought today.
There is always the route of a variance that homeowners could go through if, for some reason, they need more. It would be a case-by-case basis. We've got a Board of Zoning Appeals that reviews those. Staff reviews them and gives recommendation based off the criteria in the Virginia State Code for a variance. So there's always that option that we can talk through the homeowners to see if they want to go that route or not, but I do welcome the feedback for the smaller homes.
And I do have one other question. A lot of your farmers that actually do large farming may not necessarily own all of the farming that they are doing, but they have their property, but they've got to store their big equipment, like combines. I mean, if you have two combines, two tractors and, and something else, aerators or whatever, after a while, those sheds get big, but because they are farmers, they travel from site to site. Would that affect our farmers and, and sort of like not allow them to be able to house all their equipment?
So that is some of the feedback that we're seeking from our farmers to figure out what can help and work with them. We do have an option where we could put an administrative modification into the ordinance for those with bona fide agricultural and farming uses on a property to seek that modification to increase the amount, the size of structures on their property.
I, I have one. This is a 3,000-square-foot or 10,000-square-foot footprint?
Yes.
Okay, if it's, if you build a garage with a second floor, that's not double, that's just the one footprint.
Yes, yes.
Well, and clarification, if it's an addition, it's, it's not an accessory. If it's part of the, the original building, if it's added to the building, then wouldn't be an accessory use or accessory building.
Correct.
Yeah, if it's attached, yeah.
Angela, that's a.
Did I hear you properly that the, this includes, did you say patios and detached garage and carports and all of that?
Covered structures, yes. So if it's an uncovered patio, that would not count, but if it's got a roofed structure, it would count.
Okay. I understand that you're trying to stop a bunch of clutter. Is there anything else, any other reason? Because I can, I hear a lot of things on why this would not be good for a lot of people. One, Ms. Townsend just said. Then, as you said, I think about the farmers. And I think about the, the, the home that I currently live in now, with the detached garage and the covered area and my shed. It would put limitations on people in the county. So explain to me again why we're putting more limitations on people that own property?
So this would actually expand the allowance than what's already limited, limited now at 3,000 square feet. So it gives our homeowners the opportunity. For instance, the last couple of months, I've had three homeowners that I've had to deny permits that wanted to add a workshop or a pool house or an additional shed on their property that couldn't because they already had larger structures that were pre-existing when they, before they bought the lot. And so this allows them to have a little bit more fluctuation with structures. So if we've got a property that comes in, if the new ordinance is passed and they already exceed the 10,000 square feet or the five structure limit or their 5%, whichever one they fall into, there, again, there is that option for a variance. I haven't found too many yet. There's a lot of properties in the county that I haven't fully gone through that have exceeded these limits just yet, that are just your regular homeowners and not an actual farm. But those are ones that we would look at a case-by-case basis to see, are they meeting it? If not, do they have the grounds for a variance that staff could support? But ultimately, any variance decision would be determined by our Board of Zoning Appeals.
Okay. But this is increasing what the old one said. I thought so. So it's better.
But I think.
It's bigger. They can build more bigger. It's going from. Going from 3,000 to 10,000. Okay. So it's getting, giving them more. Yeah, I heard that. But I wanted to be sure about the, like, detached, say patio area, and you're covering the patio area, but you don't have a structure around it. All of those things would be included. Yeah. So for like me, I have a patio area. At the moment, I cover it in my detached garage, and that has a covered patio area. I'm, I'm truly thinking about a bigger picture for folks like me that already has these detached structures. If I want to include something else, what would happen?
Sure. So we've got a concern about covering a patio but not fully enclosing it with walls to consider. Okay. I just made that note that we can talk about as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I think what Ms. Townsend was saying was, people can generally afford to build smaller structures, right? But even though this allows up to 10,000 square feet, many people might not be able to afford to build one big structure, so they build multiple smaller structures as they can afford it. But now, now you're limited to five. So square footage, if you can build a 10,000, you know, if you can afford to build that, then you're okay. The question I have is, and you may have just answered, how many properties in the county would automatically not be in compliance if this were approved? Like, how many already exceed this right now?
That I would need to continue looking into, but I can have those numbers when we move forward with the ordinance. I don't have a solid number on that yet, though, but those that were, would not be in compliance would be grandfathered in.
Yeah, I, I would think, I would think there wouldn't be that many, if any. Now, there could be a number that exceed the 3,000 that is already in ordinance that are not compliant, but not the 10,000, I would think.
I would suggest there's probably a handful of farms that actually would have more than 10,000 square foot under roof, but again, it's, it'd be a genuine farming operation.
I'd be more inclined to think there's more that have more than five structures, auxiliary structures with hay barns and things like that, and sheds and whatnot, feed barns. So I would think that would be the point where we'd have a lot of existing properties may exceed the five structures right now.
And that's why we want to consider the acreage, the larger acreage for the feed barns or the animal barns, silos that hold the grain, so that they can still have the larger, a larger amount of structures.
Mr. Chairman, Ms. Leflet, do you think there would be need of any provisions in the revised ordinance where a property owner cannot subdivide the property to create the provision where he could actually have more than 10,000 square feet of the total property? For instance, they have, say, 400 acres to divide it in half. They can have 10,000 here, 10,000 there, but of the original property, it would be 20,000 square feet. So is there need for provisions that prevent the subdivision of the property to circumvent that code, the proposed code?
Not quite sure. Sorry. That's a good point. Again, this is a work in progress.
Yeah, and I, I just bring it up as a question. I don't know if there's an answer right now, but I can understand where people or the interpretation could be made, well, I just subdivided a property and I not only had 10,000, I'll have 20,000.
We'll take that feedback and discuss internally as we continue to work on the ordinance. I mean, I think we also have to recognize that the subdivision of property in and of itself is not cheap, so we can take a very strong want to have those additional structures, whether that's square footage or number, to go through that process.
Yeah.
So I mean, we'll definitely take that into.
Now, there could be a number that exceed the 3,000 that is already an ordinance that are not compliant, but not the 10,000, I would think.
I would, I would suggest there's probably a handful of farms that actually would have more than 10,000 square foot under roof. But again, it's, it'd be a genuine farming operation.
I'd be more inclined to think there's more that have more than five structures, auxiliary structures with hay barns and things like that and sheds and whatnot, feed barns. So I would think that would be the point where we'd have a lot of existing properties may exceed the five structures right now.
And that's why we want to consider the acreage, the larger acreage for the feed barns or the animal barns, silos that hold the grain, so that they can still have the larger, a larger amount of structures.
Mr. Chairman. Ms. Leflet, um, do you think there would be need of any provisions in the revised ordinance where a property owner cannot subdivide the property to create the provision where he could actually have more than 10,000 square feet of the total property? For instance, they have, say, 400 acres to divide it in half. They can have 10,000 here, 10,000 there. But of the original property, it would be 20,000 square feet. So is there need for provisions that prevent the subdivision of the property to circumvent that code, the proposed code?
That's a good point. Again, this is a work in progress.
Yeah, and I, I just bring it up as a question. I don't know if there's an answer right now, but I can understand where people or the interpretation could be made. Well, I just subdivided property and I not only had 10,000, I have 20,000.
We'll take that feedback and discuss internally as we continue to work on the ordinance. I mean, I think we also have to recognize that the subdivision of property in and of itself is not cheap. So we can take a very strong want to have those additional structures, whether that's square footage or number, um, to go through that process. So I mean, we'll definitely take that into consideration, do some research on that.
And the second thing is just something that I look at YouTube videos. I understand that there is innovation that's coming to, and not that we have this industry in New Kent County, but to chicken, raising poultry, in which they actually have poultry buildings that are transient on the property. That way exposes the chickens that are feeding off the property to new locations. It's operated by solar energies, just constantly in rotation. So a movable building, a building that can transition, would that count as a structure or accessory structure, even though it's not affixed to the ground?
Um, we can talk more in staff internally. I would think, just off my thoughts here, yes, because a carport could be moved if they don't anchor it into the ground. So there is a possibility for carports, gazebos or pergolas to be moved, depending on how they're secured. But definitely, I'll make that note to consider that as well.
Thank you.
And just to comment too, as far as for agricultural uses, how would we track this, as it were? So if you have, if it's a genuine agricultural building, it's not required to, um, they're not required to obtain building permits. So are they required to do a site plan? On a one, uh, so you want to build a barn, a purely agricultural building that is exempt from the building code?
Uh, my understanding is we don't typically see those structures come through when it's an agricultural building. So if they're not coming through, I wouldn't know about them. We'd hope that the property owners are, you know, honest and being in good faith of the structures that are going out there without permits. But the primary concerns and calls that I've received are your homeowners looking to add more sheds or garages to the rear of their property.
And I guess, and I hadn't thought about it previously, but so the same barns or that are exempt from the building code, they're not exempt from the assessment. I mean, they still have a value. So I guess, I mean, that would be picked up on at least when we do assessments, I would imagine. And also for residential properties or the, if it's less than 150 square feet, at least it used to be in the building code, you're exempt from getting a building permit for that too, right? As long as there's no electrical plumbing or any other trades going on. Is that still correct? 256, okay. So there may be other, you know, where it wouldn't require a site plan or any other permissions that we would have to.
Yeah, and those are typically caught in the permitting stage. So the three that I have had to deny recently, their sheds were smaller than what needed a building permit. So when looking at aerials and then looking at the assessment site, those were the, that's where the additional structures were picked up that put them over the threshold.
And I guess, final comment, the, uh, so, and if we have existing, if once, if we change the ordinance and the 10,000 limit is existing, anything that's beyond that, it's just, I guess it'll be considered non-conforming use. There's nothing, we're not going to require them to take anything down or to.
Existence.
Would the, uh, Mr. Chairman, would there be any consideration of having a, a cap on, on the acreage that this particular provision would apply to? Mr. Bennett mentioned a, a 400 acre parcel. I don't think we should, we should be limiting farmers to five buildings on 400 acres. That just seems, seems kind of ridiculous.
Correct. So that's where the limit, if you're less than, if we did say the 25 acres, less than 25 acres, you're capped to the five. Anything over that, you wouldn't be capped to the number of structures.
Okay. Okay.
Sure.
If there's a, if there's a five building limit, I've already went over. Based on five, the number five there. I do know there's, there are structures in place to keep cows to have shade, things such as that. So I think that's my only concern, the number five here for a farmer.
Sure. And that's one that we are open to. Is, is five too little? Is it too much? So if we need to raise that number based off of feedback, there's that flexibility to still raise that number.
Okay.
And there was a question about those properties that are currently in compliance with our current, current ordinance, that if they were not in compliance with this proposed ordinance, what would happen? Nothing would happen. They would remain legally non-conforming. So if the numbers is the issue, if the number changed to five, if somebody currently had six, we're not going to make anybody tear them down. They would be legally non-conforming. The vast majority of the properties in the county that are going to be touched by this are going to be increasing the amount of accessory structures, both the number and the square footage.
And I guess, and to continue with that thought, so the three applications you had would otherwise been approved versus denied.
Mr. Chairman, as to what our county attorney mentioned, if that property was sold, does that carry on to the next owner that they'll have to abide by?
Yes, as long as the use is continuous, even across property owners. So if Bobby sells to Susie, Susie sells to Timmy, as long as they're keeping those structures and using them for those same uses, as long as it doesn't cease for more than a period of two years. So if the property were to cease to be used for that agricultural operation or for that residence or for something to remain vacant, that legal non-conforming status would lapse after a two-year period. Also, there are certain circumstances, and it gets a little bit complicated here, when big repairs are required. And it also depends on the cause of the need for the repair. But in the vast majority of circumstances, as long as you're continuing to use the property in the same way, regardless of who is using the property, that protection continues.
Of course, if, if an auxiliary facility is destroyed, what happens? If they're non-conforming and the building is destroyed, can they build back?
And so that's, that's an interesting question. Angela and I were talking about that earlier. And there are certain circumstances in which it's destroyed voluntarily. If you, the homeowner, destroy it, then you don't get the protection. But if there's a storm, which is probably the common thing, you know, a tree branch falls and hits on it and you have to repair, repair it, that's a different situation. But if the homeowner voluntarily removes it, it would not be protected. And then in other circumstances, if they're just repairing it and they're repairing it to substantially the same condition, then they would continue to be protected.
Ms. Leflet, is there any consideration on further limiting the number of structures, total structures allowed on residential property? It may be only 10,000 square feet. I would think five structures on a 10,000 square foot lot, when you consider the front setback, the principal building. Five may be way too many on the residual of that lot.
Sure, we can add that to the consideration. And then, of course, all setbacks would need to be met in whatever zoning district that they're in. So some might wind up getting into situations where they can't meet the setbacks and get a whole lot of buildings on their property.
And if, if I recall the code correctly, well, remind me of the code, an accessory structure can or cannot exist without principal structure.
So the way that the ordinance reads is it can exist with a principal structure or if you own the lot next to it. So you, both lots are side by side and you own one of them. And the lot that has your primary structure, you could have an accessory structure on that lot next door. Or if you have a permit that's been issued for the primary structure, but you want to put the accessory structure ahead of time, that can work as well.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Leflet or staff?
Thank you.
Very nice. Thank you very much.
I look forward to the feedback and tracking something that works.
Ms. Leflet, would you mind sending your presentation to us, maybe?
Sure.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And next we have a presentation from the County Housing Advisory Committee.
Good evening, Mr. Chairperson, members of the committee. My name is Andy Shine. I am the chairperson of your New Kent County Housing Advisory Committee. Tonight, we'd like to do a, a short presentation to share with you some of what we've been researching and finding to get some feedback. We're a little bit over a year in existence. And initially, the, the presentation is about 60 pages long. So we've done a lot of work on the committee. So we'd just like to start and, and share some of stuff with you and probably get some feedback from the board. This isn't working. Here we go. So, so this is the agenda we're going to talk on tonight. You can see we have the introduction, why it matters, why do we need to look into housing in our county, our current situation, goals, solutions and resources. Three words, that's, that's a lot of work, a lot of research to do that, especially the resources. We found that there are resources out there that people just don't know about. And we're finding things. And that's one of the things we need to do, is, is get that to the people who needs to find housing here. We'll have a conclusion. And then next step is we want to get some questions and some feedback. New Kent County leaders recognize that there are a variety of housing needs resulting from our surging population and increasing workforce opportunities. They created the Housing Advisory Committee by adopting Resolution R 1923. Two citizens from each district, along with employees from the county and Department of Health employees, serve on the committee. The committee's purpose is to make recommendations to the Board of Supervisors to address housing affordability and safety. The housing framework proposal summarizes the current housing situation and offers policy goals, solutions and suggestions and funding sources. One of the first things we did at our first committee meeting, we discussed all these needs and it took quite a while. We quickly realized that we needed to divide into subcommittees. So we have three subcommittees. Each work, we work together as a main committee, but the subcommittees will work on new housing, safe housing and research. And the research part of it is just trying to find what grants are out there. And once we find them, how we can get them and give advice to the Board of Supervisors. So I'm going to introduce to you Bill Dismore, who is the vice chairman of our committee, and he's going to take it over from here. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. We got a lot of solutions. We looked at a lot of different sources. The first thing we're going to look at, or we have looked at, is the code. You heard a lot of that discussion tonight about accessory structures. We looked at that as well. And we looked at it from the standpoint of seniors who want to age in place with family members. So there's a lot of people that own homes now that want to take care of their elderly parents and build a structure on their, on their property. But currently, the code limits it to like 450 square feet or something like that. So hopefully, we can get that changed so they can build larger structures if necessary. We also consider the housing that exists. A lot of it needs repair. We have a lot of areas within New Kent County that the houses themselves are run down. So we have a number of nonprofit organizations like Habitat for Humanity that will come in and help us bring these houses, get the repairs done, bring them up to code and also make them safer for the residents. We look at a lot of grants. There's a ton of federal and state grants available that we can tap into. And that's also what the committee has been looking at. And then finally, we're looking at new affordable housing that can be built within the county. And when we get further along in the slide, you're going to see why this is very, very important. Why it matters. A roof over our head is a cornerstone of a healthy and thriving community. It affects majorly three areas. Education, um, there are 1,100 plus students in New Kent County that are below the federal poverty level, 125% below the federal poverty level. That means some of them are homeless. They don't have enough food to eat, so we've come to the schools for meals. So the housing is not available for them. So they're living in Star Motel, they're living in their parents' cars, they're living with relatives, couch surfing from place to place. So if we can get them into affordable housing, the students are going to be much better prepared to be educated. Economic development. Housing for Virginia estimates that a development with 750 occupied homes will produce 124 million in local wages and benefits, 367 million in local economic output and 6.3 million in local tax revenue. So think about that when you think about putting affordable housing communities together. Just about every dollar invested in an affordable housing community returns $1.44. So you're getting money back on it. When we look at regional competitiveness, we're talking about commercial business coming into the county. It's important. The Urban Institute research indicates that housing costs indeed affect where a business will relocate. So if we want to get them into New Kent County, they're looking at the cost of housing for their employees. Secondly, a constrained housing supply coupled with regional growth pushes up rents and home prices. You're seeing that today. Third, access to affordable and stable housing can make workers more productive. And affordable housing options approve, improves access to jobs for every level of employee. Here's our current situation. According to Zillow, the median list price for a home in New Kent County as of today is $455,000. The median sale price is $405,000. If you were to buy a home at 5% down, assuming you don't have any other money to put towards the payment, at 6.8% interest for a 30-year loan, you need to make $98,000 a year to afford a house payment of $3,036 a month. Think about that. If you put 20% down, you need an income of $80,830 to buy a house with a 30-year loan, at $405,000 cost. So New Kent is rapidly becoming either an agriculture and bedroom community and we have no commercial business because they can't afford to hire workers at $15 an hour, $20 an hour to live and provide housing for them. So these numbers up here will show you the number of homes that are owner occupied, the rent and the vacant lots and the total housing that we had. And I think this survey was back in 2022, right after they did the census. The rent at that time, when the census was done, was about $1,300 a month. Today, rent in New Kent County is $1,900 a month or more. So no apartment buildings exist anywhere. So you can see how school teachers and firefighters and police officers in New Kent County can't live here unless they have family homes for significant down payment. They have to come from outside the county. And if an opportunity opens up closer to where they live, that's called displacement. They're going to move and be closer to work. Everybody wants to, to live close to work. We took a look at the base pay and the New Kent County jobs are the green. The lower paying customer service jobs, retail clerks, grocery clerks are the pink. And then what I call managerial and executive jobs are in the green. In the column on the right, the for sale shows how much house they can afford on their salary. So if you look at a teacher, for example, who makes about $56,000, $57,000 a year on average. on average, they can't afford a home more than $200,000 a year. If you go down, further down, you can see the housing price drops. The far-right column shows the rent. So, you have to look at your situation, and you have to see, well, what can I afford? Can I even afford to live in New Kent County? So, we looked at a number, we set five policy goals, and we looked at a number of solutions and with suggestions, and we looked at 11 different funding sources in our committee study. These goals that we set were to adopt tax incentives to encourage affordable development. This can be an increase in our real estate tax. Every one penny increase in the real estate tax in this county produces in excess of $500,000. So, can that money be diverted to go towards affordable housing policies? We advocate for an increase in local public investment in housing. Let's get some businesses and communities in here, and let's incentivize them to build affordable housing for our community, build apartment buildings for the community. Prioritize affordable housing on county-owned land or other public land. Pilot a land acquisition fund. Let's buy land that we can force and code it so that only affordable housing can be built there. And then there are a number of state initiatives that grant New Kent County, we want to support state initiatives that grant New Kent County the ability to establish affordable housing policies. Some solutions, build and increase the supply of affordable rental housing, increase homeownership opportunities for low and moderate-income households, and some of this can be done with grants and financial assistance for first-time homebuyers, rental assistance, provide safe affordable housing options for our growing senior population, improve housing quality to ensure the health and safety of our residents, expand housing affordability options to stop displacement, to keep our residents here in the county, and expand housing choices for low, moderate-income households. And on the right, each one of those solutions has a number of suggestions. We can reduce barriers in the building code to allow homes to be built more quickly. There are some studies that show the, going through the zoning and permitting process can add about $90,000 to the cost of a home. So, if we can streamline that process and reduce the amount of time, you don't have that property sitting out there two to three years waiting for the permit process to be completed in order to start building. We need to establish particular affordable dwelling unit ordinances, and some of that you saw tonight with the change in the number of square footage that's allowed for pertinent structures. Prioritize affordable housing as the end use for tax sales and surplus property disposals. So, when you have a county-owned property that's up for, that's been possessed for real estate taxes owed, you can stipulate that we'll sell it for this price, but you have to build a home that has a ceiling limit that moderate, low-income families could possibly buy. Reduce the land cost by encouraging higher-density, smaller home types, smaller footprints, townhomes, two- or three-story condominiums. All of these things reduce the land cost, but can build more units. Support a land trust homeownership model, where the county owns the land, the people own the house, but when they sell the house, the land reverts back to the county. There are several trust funds like this. Maggie Walker Trust is a good example of a land trust fund. Maybe we increase the number of residential zoning districts where we allow manufactured housing to come in. And some of the manufactured housing is beautiful, not the typical metal mobile homes that you see. They're actually beautiful homes, very affordable. And we need to think about expanding the senior tax relief programs. Many of our senior citizens are on fixed incomes, and they bought the house for $300,000 10 years ago. Because of the increase in the value of the home, they're now taxed at $405,000 instead of what they paid for it. They still should pay taxes on it, but they can't afford the increase on the taxes. They budgeted it for it, they paid for it. So, maybe that's one incentive that we can put into place in the county to keep our senior citizens in their homes where they can afford to live. How do we pay for it? The county can establish the housing trust fund. They can take some of the real estate tax and put it in that fund. They can use Colonial Downs Rosie revenue and put some of that money into a housing fund. Or, we can offer bonds. We can offer property owners tax rebates in exchange for providing housing restricted to designated income levels. We can provide tax abatement for affordable housing in design, conservation, and redevelopment areas. And this is allowable under that Virginia law, state law 58.1. Request voluntary affordable housing proffers from developers. For, if you're going to build a 750-unit community, maybe 10% of that has to be for affordable homes. They can do this with a proffer. Incentivize them, give them a break on the real estate tax for a fixed number of years as an incentive to build affordable homes. Reduce and waive water-shear hookup fees to encourage it. And then, of course, Virginia Housing Opportunity has a tax credit program. That's something that maybe the county can consider being involved with. So, homeownership affordability is reaching a crisis stage in New Kent County with a median home value of $405,000. Residents earning less than $75,000 are unable to qualify for a home unless they have funds for a significant down payment. Retail commercial businesses, a hotel for tourism, are slow to materialize. We have to wonder where employees will live to work in these businesses if they can't afford the rent or they can't buy a home. Without growth in the commercial sector, New Kent County will continue to lose significant tax revenue. According to the county's own envisioned strategic plan back in 2020, county residents' retail spend was $531 million, but 55% of that money was spent outside of the county because we have no business here to spend it on. So, that's a summary of 70-some-odd pages we have at this point. We will, of course, continue to review this and edit the framework. Our next job is to complete that review and editing of the plan. We will then, at that point, make it available to you to read in its entirety if you so desire, if you need something to read when you go to bed at night, we'll be happy to provide that. The framework itself will then be presented to the Board of Supervisors, where they may accept it in its entirety, or they may pare it down to something smaller. And then, at that point, we'll proceed to develop a strategic housing plan, maybe a five-year plan, on how these particular steps approved by the Board and the planning department, if necessary, to have, how this will be implemented, and what we hope to achieve over that time period. And that is, I'm sorry to say, my very quick overview of this presentation. So, we welcome your feedback. Our emails for Andy and myself are up there. We will make this slide presentation available to you as well. And then, please, any questions or feedback?
Well, thank you, Mr. Dismore and Mr. Schein. Do we have questions?
Yes, I do have a question. When we were talking, one about the construction and maybe a possible one affordable home in the development, but how do you identify who gets the affordable home?
It's based on AMI. The state and federal levels have set three different levels, a 30%, which is very poor. Usually, those folks are in Section 8 homes, 50% level, and 80% level AMI. So, that is the target that you look at for the people that would qualify for an affordable home, and a lot of times, they are subsidized with state and federal money as well to help them with first-time homeownership or rent subsidies. So, that's, the money will come from other sources if it's necessary. Some of these people have money that they can put for a down payment on a $200,000 home. We just don't have any inventory like that in New Kent.
But when you look at that list, are we looking at a list that's all of the state of Virginia, or are you looking at a list for who is in New Kent County?
We're looking at just from New Kent County, but we're looking at examples of other communities throughout the country that have put different solutions into place and what the outcomes of those solutions were. Did that answer your question? We know certain areas in New Kent County that could be developed. McInnes Woods property is one. There's one behind Watkins Elementary. There's others that can be developed, but the biggest problem at this point is there's no water, sewage, or utilities leading to these lands. That's going to happen. That infrastructure would have to be put into place. The question is, who's going to pay for it, and how do we pay for it? So, our plan is...
And who builds it?
Well, developers would come in and bid on it, definitely. You would have developers that would do it, but they will probably want tax incentives to encourage them to come in and do that. And that might be something as simple as you don't have to pay property tax on these buildings for five years, six years, something like that.
Provided that they own it.
Well, they only tell to sell it to whoever comes in. A land trust is something different. A land trust, the county would actually own the land, and the people would buy, they don't, they don't get, so let's say the cost of a home is $250,000. The land fortune of that is $50,000. The county would buy the land, they would own it, they would have the deed. The house that's built on it is $200,000. When the people buy the home, they're buying it for the $200,000, not the $250,000, which includes the land. So, that's a land trust program, and so what that does is it allows them to buy, a lower-income person to come in and actually buy the property. Now, when they sell it, they don't sell it with the land price. The land price goes back to the county, and the house price, they would keep whatever equity they built up in the home section of it. So, if you look at your real estate tax appraisal, you'll see land value in the building separately. That's how you keep track of it.
Ms. Townsend, how, some of these have worked out. Say you have townhouses, you have 10 in a row, or let's say five in a row. One of those may be in affordable housing. You're not going to know which one it is, but the only person that could buy that one would be somebody that is under the average income, and so they are able to purchase that, but their deed is restricted that they cannot sell it. You know, they can't come in, buy it the next day, sell it for, you know, a profit. There's a deed restriction then that they have to go by, that in five years, they could sell it. And that deed restriction is because of the land that it is on. It would be either Maggie Walker Trust land, or county land, or whatever it is. But that's the, that's the idea of, you know, the townhouse community, there could be, of 100 townhouses, there may be 10, or 12, or 15 that are affordable housing, but you wouldn't know which one it is. So, because they were, they're HOA, they have all the same processes that a normal community would have. That's, is that...
Yeah, a townhouse will look the same on the outside. You're not going to be able to tell the difference inside. Instead of having quartz countertops, you might have vermicke. Instead of having hardwood floors, you might have carpet. So, you'll be able to lower the cost with, you know, plumbing fixtures, lighting fixtures, maybe of less quality than you would get in a regular one, but still going to be a functional, nice home. You just can't tell from the outside.
I have kind of a question, I guess more directed to staff at this point. So, most, I guess, multifamily housing, so being apartments or townhouses, what residential zoning allows for apartments, for example? I don't know off the top of my head, that's what I'm asking. R3, and of that, how much R3 property do we have in the county? Is it, I mean, we don't have much R residential compared to, obviously, A1 runs rampant, obviously, throughout the county, but, so I'm just, just, you know, rhetorically, I'm not asking you to give me an answer today, but... It could be zero. And, you know, similarly with townhouses and, you know, I don't know what zoning district is that in, similar questions. Right, and...
See, the builder, or the developer, I'm sorry, made a proffer, and he would build 30 affordable housing units in one of the landbays, Farm from New Kent, for example. Land Bay 3, I think, so the developer pledged to build 30 affordable home units in Land Bay 3 once they started building there. Now, he probably can switch them over, move them to Land Bay 4, or Land Bay 5, whatever, but that's a proffer. So, as part of the development process, that was agreed to upfront.
And I guess in the development of, within the PUD itself, or whichever land bay, I mean, would these be the last ones that are, last part of the PUD that's developed? So, when, when would they come online, I guess, for, for sale? Is that, or do we have any control over that?
That's up to the developer, unfortunately. At this point, he's only committed to 30, but there's no timeline in the PUD itself that says, okay, if you build 500 units, you need to have so many of these affordable category homes built along with it. The PUD wasn't as specific for that as we'd like for it to be now. That's one of the purposes of the committee, is to provide guidelines and offer suggestions on going forward when we get these new developments coming into the county, how can we benefit all of our citizens with good housing policies?
Right, yeah. I just want to, you know, give lip service to it and say we have, potentially, we could have, you know, multifamily housing, or, you know, townhouses and such, and, but we never, if that's not developed, or if it developed so late into the project. I know the developer wants to get the money, you know, and that's understandable, I get that, but...
One of the other problems with development for affordable housing is you have to protect yourself from private equity firms coming in and buying these developments up and setting rents, so they can set the rents above the qualifications for moderate to low-income families, and that just ruins the whole concept. So, you have to be careful in how you develop the policy and how you develop your code restrictions when you do things like affordable housing, prevent that type of thing from happening. So, it's tough. It's tough to get people to do it.
Mr. Chairman, a question. Can we go back to the slide where it shows income versus rent and home purchase pricing? I don't know if we can get back to that. If we can, it's no big deal. But if we look at the bottom two brackets of that, I just didn't note that I kind of took in my head, was what is a, what is a price range that we're looking for when we consider affordable housing? And I'm, I'm not talking anything to do with government subsidies or any of that. What is a price range for affordable housing for those bottom two sectors? We need a, I think if developers and builders knew what that range could be, there's an opportunity to build within that range in New Kent County with incentives through tax purposes for, take all the subsidies and all that out of it, like, we don't even, sometimes we don't have to worry about all that. How can we make it affordable to build a home for someone to come in and buy? And, and that's what I look at in there. We're looking at, basically, we're between $100,000 and $225,000. We're between $100,000 and $225,000. How do we make that affordable? And how do we make it as a planning commission to give the zoning ordinances proper with the, with the planning department to find those parcels of land, utilize the Board of Supervisors to find those areas, and then say, okay, this is what we're going to build, we're going to find a developer to do that? Because at the end of the day, if the cost of the land, if we looked at seven years ago, the cost of acreage in New Kent County that could be rezoned, you could easily build a home for $130,000. The, the problem is, is we're, we're trying to gouge things and raise them, and I understand how all of that works, but we're looking at a median home, a, a home price range between $125,000 and $225,000. That's really what we need to build. That's what the county needs. Where are we going to put it, and where does it need to go? And it seems like the only proper place is going to be within District 1, 2, or 3, and because that's where we're seeing the commercial development. I mean, the commercial development is within District 3. We need to have the housing for those people, and they don't want to live 40 miles from work. They want to live, we want them in New Kent County. We want them to use all the services that we have, and that's only going to increase that. I, I think that the businesses coming in are paying a... I, I think that the businesses coming in are paying a, a living wage. How can we make that? How, where can we put those homes and how can we build those homes? Cause I know that there are builders local within the central Virginia market that would be able to build a home, and that's, comes down to modulators and things like that for $125,000 to $225,000 if the land price is right. So I tend to agree, but I think that that is one of the largest areas to look at is within that lower end of the top, which is your white collar workers and all the way down to your, you know, obviously, it's hard to be a grocery store clerk and own a home. And that, that, the hope is, is that you start with that and you, you, you build your skills and you become better. That's the goal of life, but not everybody has that same goal. But I think that if you look at, I just look at that range and, I mean, 125 to 225 is a, and Tammy could probably speak on this a little bit more, but when it comes to a home, that, it can be done on a build, um, especially if the land is priced right. And maybe when you look at that?
Right. That's one of the key, the other thing we looked at, I'm sorry, John.
Well, I, I was just saying that, uh, the American dream is to buy a home, but not when you're, um, working at McDonald's. Okay, that's not necessarily the time you're thinking about buying a home. Uh, we don't need to make housing affordable for that, that, uh, minimum wage job, okay? That's, that's not what we need to do. We need to make housing available and, and that may be apartments, um...
And that's what I look at the last category, where you look at your rents.
Right.
You know, that's where you can fit that, that lower end in.
You know, and I, I would think the, and I say, uh, buying a home is a dream. It, not necessarily reality for every person.
Right.
But there's no reason why it can't be a reality. And if we can get those prices down a little bit to make reality a little sooner, you know, that's great. Um, one of the things we do not, we haven't talked about yet, most of these, uh, teachers, firefighters, and deputy sheriffs are married and they have incomes, their spouses have incomes that are similar. That puts them to the next level.
Right.
Okay, as, as in our neighborhoods, we have, we have deputies that, that live there, we have policemen that live there, firefighters that live there. Because they have dual incomes. And our dual income average is $101,000, uh, in New Kent County. So our affordability for a dual income house, i- you know, 80% of that is $80,000 and we're getting close to be able to afford, you know, housing. Uh, so the, the affordable is that single person that's just become a teacher. Well, when I just got a job, I, I, I rented for three years, you know, because that's what I had to do until I saved some money. And that's, you know, basically the process. And, and what, what Andy talked about was, um, the amount of grants and first time home buyer, uh, subsidies that are out there that, um, you, you can, you can make in New Kent, you can make some money and still be, uh, able to get some of that. So that's the kinda stuff we're looking at. We're not, we're not, I, I'm on the committee also, but we're not looking to, you know, uh, ma- make a project over here, um, a, a large townhouse, a large column building over here. That's not what it is. It's, it's, um, what our residents want to live in, we should be able to supply. Okay?
One of the other things we're looking at as well, I didn't mention was, a lot of the, uh, like Autozone, that huge commercial property that's there, they have 350 some odd employees coming to work for them. Most of them are forklift drivers. So how much does a forklift driver make? And they have a lot of land behind there, so we can find a way to, um, change the code to allow homes to be built on the property that Autozone is not gonna be using, then maybe they would do it to allow their workers and others to come in and buy and live there eventually to it. So there's a lot of different possibilities that we're looking at, try to get this thing done. And that's why there's, there's 45 different recommendations in this report of different ways that you can go about doing it. Now, we can't do them all, but where does the board of supervisors want us to start? What can we focus on? What can we do within a five-year period? And that's really what we're, we're honing in on at this point.
Mr. Chairman. When I hear conversations about affordable housing, it inevitably gets down to the point of where you're gonna put it. And, and people are saying, okay, are you talking about putting all of their affordable housing in one location in the county? Or will it be dispersed? And, and there are pros and cons for all of those. I particularly like the idea of saying, we're gonna put all of their affordable housing in one area, they're all the same. But studies show that if you do a mixed development, that those, those residents in the affordable housing tend to take care of their property as well as those who are key market value.
Absolutely. That's absolutely correct.
And, and, at the same point, there has to be some perfect, some protection relative for existing homeowners. You know, if, if, if you've got a subdivision and it's already built up, do you wanna come in there and say, hey, we don't need affordable housing there? I think it's probably better for new development and provide some protection for existing homeowners.
I agree. And then I think it's easier with the proffers to get affordable homes started and built in the county, and then you can expand out from there. But, um, like Jacob said, there's a lot of opportunity in New Kent for that $100 to $250,000 range, particularly with manufactured homes, that we can put communities together, even next to bigger communities. They look well, they, they're well kept up. Um, there's some projects, six, six homes, manufactured homes that, uh, Matt Starr's doing, um, that you can take a look at to get an idea of what they're looking, what they would look like to the public. And, I, I don't, I wouldn't mind living next to them, but...
Yeah, um, Matt hasn't done the elevation differences that are available for a lot of the new manufactured homes that you could put in the middle of development, you wouldn't know the difference, uh, because of the sidings, you know, the fake stone, but, you know, and that kinda stuff. And so that, you know, I, I know what they look like inside at Matt's, or, you know, you wouldn't know you're in a, um, in, in a manufactured home. Uh, the one thing that I always like to mention is, one thing about manufactured homes, at the end of the line, they have one, uh, one trash can, and that's their waste from building that, that manufactured home. I know what's underneath my property, what's been buried there, you know, it's filled numerous trashcans. Um, and, and they've never been weathered. Uh, you know, the wood, everything, it's always been inside. So, um, I, I believe you're gonna see it, and then blasting a lot longer than the, I, I would call them trailers before, you know, that, um, you know, that are, uh, need to be, you looked at and replaced. That's one of the things we've talked about, too.
Yeah, I was kidding, that waste is used to make the pellets for the big green egg. You know, they feed them in there, so you'll eat any waste. But thank y'all for listening to us. Um, please give us your feedback if you have any. We welcome it. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Denzmore and Mr. Shawn. We appreciate that. All right, uh, continuing forward with tonight, unfinished business. I don't believe we have any unfinished business, correct? And there are no public hearings for tonight. And we're down to new business. Shake of the head, no, no new business. Okay. All right, um, Chairman's Report, uh, really have none, uh, at this point. I'm saying listed later for the, uh, comp, comp plan update, so I'll just save that. And we'll go to, um, Reverend Hathaway, Plan RVA Report.
Uh, I do have a couple of things. The Plan RVA Partnership for Housing Affordability Conference, uh, I think New Kent was well represented in that there were approximately, I, I would estimate over 200 people, uh, showed up for that. Uh, the mayor of Richmond did a phenomenal job in presenting their approach to housing. And Dr. uh, Kyanga Yamada Taylor, Dr. Taylor, uh, professor at, uh, Princeton, did a really good presentation on some of the challenges and obstacles to affordable housing. So I thought that was a good conference. Uh, I'm been appointed to the Equity Working Group, and one of the things we're trying to do is figure out how we can reach those people groups who never participate in any of our surveys, never show up to any of our meetings, uh, and never take advantage of any of the resources that Plan RVA has. We had our first meeting last month, we've got a second one coming up the end of this month. Uh, the goal is to present something to the Executive Committee, uh, not later than the April Executive Meeting. Uh, I still have a lot of questions about it. Uh, how, one of the ideas was paying people to come to meetings. Uh, I, so I have a lot of questions about, do we really wanna do that?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. But at least, at least there's some discussion. And, and we, it, it seems to be taking two approaches. One is, how do we increase the participation in Plan RVA events? And how do we partici- uh, increase participation for those partner groups who are facing the same challenges that we are? So we're working on that group and hopefully by April, we'll have something to present. The Plan RVA Commission met in its regular commission meeting on the 13th. The very first thing that came up was federal funding cuts. Uh, that morning, when the executive director went in to do a report, everything was frozen, but by lunch, it was unfrozen. And so we don't know exactly what's gonna happen. The Executive Committee has said that in the event, uh, cuts come down, they will have an emergency session and come back and adjust the budget. And, uh, that's important because roughly 80% of the funding that comes to Plan RVA comes from the federal government. And so cuts could really hurt us. Uh, normally, we have a Plan RVA Day. We've outgrown that, we've outgrown the facilities for that. And so this year, and hopefully going forward, we will have what's called Pathways to the Future Regional Symposium. It'll be on March the 14th. It is at the Greater Richmond Convention Center. Lunch is provided. The, the conference is free, but you must pre-register. It is going to be a great conference. I would encourage everyone, uh, to register for that. And the last thing we have is the, uh, housing affordability that Plan RVA is looking at. We've been able to look at what Richmond is doing, what Henraco is doing at Chesterfield. Uh, there's a strategic economic development plan that Plan RVA has put together. The good news is, is a compilation of all the nine plans from the jurisdictions. And so it means that Plan RVA is actually working on issues that affect our communities. That's all I've got.
All right. Now to Commissioner Reports, um, Mr. Lars Schell, do you have anything to report on?
No, sir.
Ms. Thomas?
No.
Ms. Johnson?
No.
Mr. Dubrowski?
Not at this time.
Ms. Townsend?
Yes. Um, I would like to challenge everyone on this commission to start taking a little bit of a closer look in our county as you drive through. There's been a couple of areas that I have had some concerns was with our buffers. Um, some of the subdivisions were supposed to keep the rural character of New Kent County, and you weren't supposed to see subdivisions, but in, in the mix of things, you know, you can see through live long trees. So some of our buffers, I think, need to be taken care of, but also I've had some concerns about setbacks in some of the divisions. The setbacks that are on the state road, some look like they're probably no more than 20 feet. Um, and I thought subdivisions that, you know, that we had some concerns that they would sit back in, so that's why you kept that rural character of the county. So if you would, I'd just like for everyone to sorta just ride through the neighborhood. You can just sorta look through some areas, stay on the state road, and you'll see, if you pass a subdivision, see what you think, and then see what you think a buffer is. Cause I don't think there's a clear definition about buffering. And that, that, that would just be a task I'd like to discuss in the future and see if we can't come up with some kind of better plan. And maybe in the future, to eliminate some of these, uh, close to the state roads developments. I, I'd really like to see them be able to set back in, into the area so that we don't see them.
Thank you, Ms. Townsend. I guess, too, when we're looking at changes in the ordinances, um, that certainly can be addressed as far as to see what those minimum setbacks are and, and, and what the buffer requirements are. I, I would suggest, too, if it's something that a subdivision has not fully complied with as far as whatever the requirements are, I know it's based on individual parcels that have been approved previously, um, but it's a, if it turns into an enforcement action, you know, to, if something was cleared when it shouldn't have been cleared, um, for example.
Well, I think, I think you might find some on, as of right now, but I think what we need to do is say, as of today, this is what we're gonna do, and we're gonna make sure that it's enforced. Um, so that's why I said, I, I'd like for everybody just sorta kinda go through the county, just see what, what you think, what you think is, uh, appropriate and what's not appropriate. Look at your buffers and then kinda get a better understanding of what a buffer is and what it is you're trying to hide. Let's make sure that we put something in there that actually hides it.
Just have a question about that. Are you really, when we look at changing the ordinance, if, when we do, do we maybe need to have some standards of what material is considered a buffer?
Yes.
In the sense of what that actually is, rather than just a distance?
One would be dis.
Density of, and, and maybe material, when I look at like plant material, and that's something that I would notice is what will fit within that. Cause a distance is a distance, and yes, there may be some trees or some density, but we need a certain density requirement and also what that material can be to keep a consistency as we move forward. Is that what you're trying to bring up as well?
Yes.
Perfect.
And I guess, too, um, I guess, and staff can respond, but I guess there are prescribed requirements in what we approved to begin with, correct? So I guess it'd be a matter of reviewing those requirements when the time comes.
Yeah. I mean, if there are areas of concern currently, feel free to let staff know. We can certainly look back at the approved plans to ensure that those plans are still being met. Um, as you all know and have probably heard, we are going to initiate a development ordinance rewrite, uh, hopefully next fiscal year, um, which will be a comprehensive rewrite. One of the things on the list is landscape buffers and density. Um, some of those, uh, buffers may not be required by ordinance, but may just be purely in the setup of the subdivision with open space around the perimeter. Um, so not necessarily a requirement based in the code, but just in the way it was designed. Um, but as we get into that process, y'all will be kept updated, we'll ask for feedback and certainly if you have issues between now and then, let us know.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, a comment on that with the open spaces that, you know, subdivision may be built, open space planned, individual homeowners come in, and it's human nature, they start encroaching in the common area. All of a sudden, or the buffer, whatever, what was it called? Open space, supposed to be left natural. 10 years later, there's nothing there, people's lawns have gotten bigger, and if there's an HOA made up of volunteers, how do they track that and enforce it? And, you know, that's the kinda thing that I think would, um, that I have personally seen where just a, the little bitty encroachment, a little at a time into those common areas and before you know it, they're gone. And so now I can look out my window and see my neighbor looking at me out his window where there used to be 50-foot of trees between us. And that to me is a, would be worth looking at.
Uh, anything else, Ms. Townsend?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Reverend Hathaway?
Nothing.
Doc Schmidt?
Nothing.
Mr. Bennett?
Nothing.
Ms. Rose?
Nothing at this time.
Mr. Moore?
The only thing I'll, I'll add is that, um, I've been to the Virginia Association of Counties, Virginia Municipal League, and the number one topic is housing. Uh, it doesn't matter what, what meetings I go to. Um, and it's all types of housing. It's not just, uh, what we would think of affordable. There's essential, workforce, um, all those type of housings being talked about by, uh, every community. Uh, we, we, we have a situation where we're gonna probably have pretty close to 1,000 new jobs in New Kent. And that's 1,000 people that are probably gonna be living elsewhere than New Kent. And so it's something that, uh, you know, maybe we should've been, we would've liked these guys to present this maybe about four or five years ago, uh, would make maybe a difference in what type of businesses we get here. Um, a- and so for right now, um, we're, we're, we're gonna try to leave it up to these guys and have them present, uh, something to us at the board that we're able to do something about, uh, this predicament or crisis or situation. But we appreciate you guys.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Um, comprehensive plan update, Steering Committee report. The vendor EPR has, um, forwarded a draft of, uh, of the, uh, comp plan update, uh, to all the committee members, uh, by email. Um, and I believe today was their recommended deadline for comments. Um, I have seen some comments, uh, uh, come through, or at least I was copying some. Uh, and once, uh, once we kinda hammer that out, then there will be prepared to, I guess, move forward, uh, first to the planning commission and then to the, to the board. first to the planning commission and then to the, to the board. Still need to float the idea of maybe we'd do a work session, I think, between the two, the commission and the board to have them present this, you know, what they consider their final draft. But other than that, I have no other, no other news or, or any, any reports. And now for staff reports. Another shake of the head, all right. Y'all are making it easy. Meeting schedule, the next planning commission, we'll hold the meeting on, and I don't know why this is not a holiday, but is it on March seventeenth? We all know that this is a recognized holiday. For those of us with Irish heritage. But March seventeenth, St. Patrick's Day, at six thirty here in the boardroom. And with that, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment. All right, thank you, Reverend Hathaway. Oh, really?